You guys are live, thank you.
Yeah, thanks. Good evening, everyone, good evening town. Welcome to the Board of Health meeting for November eighth, two thousand and seventeen. If you're all joined, I pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, everyone. We're trying to, we're gonna try to follow the agenda, but we do do a lot of jumping around, depending on priority and who's here at the time. Have two representatives from Bristol Aggie. One was for the food permit questions and another one for construction. I think we'll go with the construction first, please. You can come right up here.
Oh, sure.
You can actually stand them up against those, that might even be better.
I can pull them up while I was talking about them too.
Okay.
I'll tell you about this one first, so that's easier. So, my name is Bobby Williams, I'm from HMFH Architects. HMFH was hired to work with the Bristol County Agricultural High School, starting the feasibility study and take it all the way through, hopefully, the construction of a new, not a fully new, but a renovated campus and some new buildings. It's very early in the process, we're just starting schematic design. We have met with a lot of the other town officials, but we like to just introduce ourselves and we're really setting project budgets right now. So, we wanted to kind of go over some high level information that we have now, give you, introduce you to the project and see if there's any potential cost implications you might up top your head say, oh, you guys need to carry this type of material in the kitchen or this, you know, you need to consider this now, so we can just start early on in the planning process. So, we fully intend to be communicating with you throughout the process, but again, this is, was just to try to introduce you to the project, so you're aware of it and get some feedback. So, this is a site plan of the campus right now. This is Center Street. You would probably recognize them, this is the footprint of Gilbert Hall, which is their main building. I'm assuming, is everyone somewhat familiar with the campus, a little bit? So, what we're looking to do is the school's actually growing from four hundred and fifty students to six hundred and forty and in doing so, they're gonna double their animal science program and they're going to add a new program called Environmental Technology. Currently, they have very undersized science classrooms and those science classrooms are, they don't meet state standards, so that's part of what the Massachusetts School Building Authority, who's funding half of the project, is requiring to be upgraded as well. So, we've gone through a feasibility study, identified needs and goals and just some high level stuff. There was always some safety concerns with traffic flow through the middle. There was concerns that the campus didn't feel connected because animal science was stuck on this side of the street and the rest of the school is stuck on this side of the street. So, what we're looking to do is initially just push the traffic pattern to the peripheral, turn this into more of a pedestrian spine where students will be able to come through and then on the other side of the building, construct a new, it's about a seventy-five thousand square foot new building, what we're calling Center for Science and the Environment. This will house their new and expanded animal science program. It'll house the natural resource management plus that new program, environmental technology. It would have their new cafeteria, which is their kitchen component there and it would also have their media, which is their library, would also be part of that building. We're looking to this, move the existing dairy barn and create a, design a brand new dairy barn, which would be a robotic milking facility is what we're proposing right now. The current animal science building would be completely torn down and that, this building would go up in its place.
The structure over here, about twenty-six.
Yeah, that's the old cafeteria, right, is that the old building?
This is correct, Keith Hall has the old cafeteria and the board, where the board meets a lot. That would not be touched in this, the cafeteria would, I'm not gonna say abandoned, because they might use it,
Maybe a satellite feature?
Perhaps, yep. So, we, this is now somewhat out of our project scope, we're not really touching that building other than if there was maybe some need for temporary housing of students while we were doing our construction process, where they're building new and moving.
They still have that to utilize that.
They would still have that to utilize, the swing space potentially. Everything in gray, which is the Ag Mechanics Building, Gilbert Hall, would be renovated. So, it'd be a full renovation, bringing it up to code. We would look to add an elevator to make the lower levels accessible. We would probably be doing some new bathrooms in there to bring those up to code, because right now, they're, you know, not accessible and there's probably not enough for the building. We would also have the landscape pole barn would be turned into a landscape lab and put a classroom in there. So, again, that would be brought up to code and we re-insulate the walls. One thing we're looking and we're talking to do is maybe do use the composting toilets. So, that's still early on in the planning, but one of the reasons we're looking to do that is it's, might be very difficult to bring the sewer line over there. The use in that building might be pretty minimal, so we're just exploring options right now. The school's gonna be used, hopefully, as a teaching facility for the students. So, bringing a composting toilet into an agricultural school might also allow for, you know, where, display and kids can learn about composting and different features like that. And then, we're looking to add an arboriculture addition off of the existing agriculture building. So, that would be primarily a large bucket truck storage and a chainsaw lab. So, that would kind of be inserted on the back. And then, there'd be a full renovation of Gilbert Hall where the science classrooms moved to this building over here and we reconfigure the interior spaces to allow for about twenty, I think it's twenty-one classrooms for the sixty, six hundred and forty students. So, one of the things I just wanted to first touch base on, this is the very schematic drawing of the footprint of the new Center for Science in the building, Science and the Environment. Right here, we're looking to put a kitchen. So, one thing we want to talk about is in the animal science building, they would have their small animals. So, they would have lavatory mice, they have some rabbits, they have, I believe, reptiles and some birds. And then, in the natural resource management program, they have these different type of labs where they have the turtles and head start with turtles, so they take little turtles and grow them and then release them to the wild. So, we'd be looking to combine these into one large center. And in addition, we'd have the kitchen and dining in there. So, we know there's some biosecurity concerns that we're already gonna be addressing through doors. We're not really showing the appropriate doors and security there, but that was one question we had of the board is, do you see any kind of potential, you know, stop and think about this a little bit more with having the kitchen within this building? So, I'm not gonna put you on the spot, but that's something we were kind of thinking about and we wanted to, to kind of bring up to you now.
I'm just thinking about where the food delivery comes in, from the, from the back there?
Yeah, so let me bring this, this back up, so it's a little easier. So, the house that was directly across, which was called the Harrison House, was sold to the school. So, they got this property across the street. So, we'd be tearing that down and there's a, we're looking to put a drive all the way around. So, deliveries would be a one-way in and it would just be only for deliveries that would come up this side and then we'd have a turnaround in, drop-off at the back of the, back over here. And that would be for the main deliveries for the school, for that, the whole science.
And that's not gonna be tight for those food delivery trucks?
So, we're working on the clearances, but right now, this, this, the scale is drawing, it might be a little misleading, but this is about a, I believe, a twenty-two foot drive. It, it meets the state fire code requirements for, you know, for, I mean.
I'm just thinking that road congestion, it's pretty tight over there.
And we are engaged in traffic study, we, we've sent out proposals for that and we'll be doing traffic studies that analyze the concept that we're showing here to get the feedback, because that was some concern from previous town officials about the backup on this road and how does moving the crosswalk down, just, you know, about forty feet and then adding potentially a drop-off lane there, how would that affect the traffic? The best thing I could say about this is they can control when the deliveries happen. So, typically, they would say no deliveries during peak rush hour of traffic, so that should be most, much of a concern for this, this part. But, you know, moving the crosswalk down and putting a couple new lights in there, that would be something we would definitely study to make sure we're helping the traffic. We are looking to improve the traffic by adding, widening this lane on the north side of campus, allowing for a bus drop-off. So, perhaps in the morning, the buses could drop off here, parents could turn in here, so buses are one side, parents on the other, and maybe in the afternoon, buses could align here, so you never have any more stopping on Center Street.
So, I don't really see the concern about having a kitchen in the middle, but would you, would you think of putting the kitchen on one end and the two different departments, slide them over together? I think it would make more sense.
Yeah, so, the biosecurity of mixing the.
Those two.
Those two is what has kept the, kind of the divider of the cafeteria, allowing those two to keep two separate buildings. So, I think that was the, that's what was driven, those two buildings to be more separate. I guess I would, do you have any requirements for materials in kitchens? I know we typically put maybe like a ceramic tile on the floor or a cory tile on the floor.
Yeah, something that's easily cleanable, non-porous.
Tile on the walls, you know. Okay, I think that, you know, we've done a lot of schools and we, we have a lot of different health departments, so.
Obviously, they're not gonna be, they're not gonna be cooking, we're gonna have a trained staff that'll be washing their hands.
Correct.
And handling the food.
Yeah.
It's just that when everybody else comes in, they should be able to clean their hands before they start eating.
Yes.
Especially working with the animals.
Yes, I'm saying, we will have, we do have locker rooms, different locker rooms for the actual students specifically. I'm sure we'll have different stations where, there'd be handwashing stations, that would be more prevalent within each of the labs, so when they leave, a lot of times they have to wash things before they go away.
Encourage them to do it.
And when they come out, so it would all be part of that, of their.
Do they have small paper versions that we could have?
Sure, I do.
Yeah, we can take a peek at it and, you know.
Sure, I can definitely send those over. Is there a business card, just let me, I like to grab?
I'd just have a card, I don't mind. So, when it comes to commercial kitchens, you know, they are ventilated with very powerful exhaust systems.
Yes.
And in all my years, it's almost impossible not to create negative pressure in a commercial kitchen.
Okay.
So, the concern that I would have and I would enlighten the board is if you have small animals in the same building.
Yeah.
And you create a negative air pressure environment and you can have airborne animal dander, parasites, et cetera, et cetera, that will find its way to the kitchen.
Okay.
So, I'd like you to keep in mind.
Absolutely.
Come out of air brakes, air locks, filtration systems, things of the like, 'cause it's very hard to get enough fresh air into a commercial kitchen to satisfy the exhaust.
No, that makes sense. And we, we are working with Garcia Galuska de Souza as our mechanical engineers and we will be looking at the negative pressure, because each of these labs have a very specific level of ventilation requirement. So, the kitchen will most likely have its own rooftop unit or indoor unit that would be providing, that would, the system we use uses a hundred percent dedicated outside air that comes in, so we're never recirculating the air, the types of systems that we're looking at currently, it's called displacement ventilation. So, that helps with some of that, because once it goes out, you're not reheating the same air, which definitely helps with that pollutant, but, you know, you're right, these are always very tricky.
So, and we also understand everything works great on paper, but.
Yes, absolutely.
Just let me know, when it comes to the time when we do the annual system inspection and we check for proper ventilation, we will be looking for negative air draft.
Sure.
Because obviously, with the, you know, animals within the same building, we, we don't wanna create an environment that would be hazardous, so.
Oh, that makes sense. And that, we, that's why, these plans don't show yet, but we were gonna start to look at potentially air locks between any time you enter into the kitchen or not, so I think that will be.
I think that would be proven.
That will be explored, for sure.
Yeah, okay.
Excellent, thank you for that.
That was the only, that's the only way you can place the kitchen?
You know, it's schematic designed, so these four plans will shift and reshape themselves, probably five or six different ways.
It seems like there's a lot of variables just for that.
Yeah.
It sounds better where, if I was looking at it, I'd say, where else can I put this kitchen?
Yeah, I mean, we did look at options across the way, Gilbert Hall. Problem is, this building is so tight with the new classroom requirements, 'cause they are growing. This cafeteria is not large enough to accommodate even kind of growth without some oddball kind of addition that's now kind of still puts the kids further away from campus and their, their goal is to really create a hub and that's why we're trying to give them the large gathering space of the school with these spaces so. And then, we're definitely constrained on the, on the sides here, which makes it difficult, but we will be reconfiguring these plans probably in many ways to make sure we have the most appropriate fit for them. Excellent. Well, I thank you for your time and if you, does anybody have a card or maybe I can just grab an email, or I can email Rosalind.
Yeah, if you send them to me, I'll make sure they get Rosalind, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you guys, appreciate it.
Thanks.
Hi. It was just public input.
Yeah, that was public input?
No.
No.
Yeah, we're gonna go on the regular agenda with, uh.
But we might, the gentleman from the.
From the Iron Ice?
Yep, it's, it was just part of public input.
Come on up.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Hi, good evening.
So, my name's John Robertson, I'm the Vice President of PTO at Bristol Aggie. So, we have an event on Friday, December eighth, from four to eight, we call Bonfire and Ice. It's an annual event, the Arbor Department sets up a large bonfire in the field next to, I'm sure, you're taking it, I'm sure you're familiar with it.
Last year, right?
Huh?
Last year.
Yeah, yeah.
Coldest day of the year.
Right.
Seemed like.
It, it seems like it's either freezing or it's drizzling.
Yeah.
So, I'm, I'm here to ask about the food and check in with you, I wanna make sure we're doing everything above board. What the PTO plans do is we have our commercial grill and we wanna bring in, into hamburgers, hot dogs, sausage and peppers, portion-controlled condiments, sealed bags of chips, cans of soda and bottled water. So, we just wanted to check in, see if you want a temporary permit or if you have questions or what you'd like from us.
This is all run by the school, right?
This is through the PTO, through the PTO organization of the school itself.
No vendors coming in?
There's no vendors, there's one, one other school organization. I'm not sure who it is, like, like the Honor Society or, or something like that, who in the past has done hot chocolate. And we've got clarification on that, but we'd make sure it was okay with your department. But they're not a vendor, they're just another school group. I don't know if you want to list it as a vendor, but we could give you that information. And I've forwarded my, my certifications, I'd be overseeing the food end.
I think we did the inspection last year, I did it with you.
It wasn't me. So, it was Trey, who's daughter graduated and so he left it in my hands. We, the PTO actually voted to make sure that we have someone serve safe every year. That was my business before anyways, but going forward, we'll always have someone serve safe for this type of event.
I think we have something in place for nonprofit organizations.
Yeah, do a temporary event nonprofit, to behalf of the.
It was fifty percent of the permit fee, which is thirty-five dollars, so it would be seventeen fifty.
Okay.
Just a one for that.
Okay.
Temporary permit.
The temporary permit, okay. I, I have one with me, I can submit it or I can send it to Rosalind, however you prefer.
I have his, so, safe allergen and.
And you have the application?
Well, that's why he's got it.
I have it in my hand, okay.
So, he submitted and then, like, like we had mentioned, it's, it's half the price for nonprofit organizations.
Okay.
And she'll just verify everything is there, submit it.
So, the liability insurance, that I do not have, so is that just, I would pull it out of the schools? Does the PTO have their own liability, how does that work?
We don't have our own liability, I've been told that we're covered by the schools.
Okay.
I, I'm sure you have that on hand.
I do, I can pull that out of the file for you, so. So, if that's all set, I can take it and then you can just drop me off a check and I'll get this processed for you.
Okay, great, I can do that.
If you have it ready, if you don't.
Yes.
And what time?
Four to eight.
Four to eight.
Sorry, I missed the date.
Friday, December eighth.
Five, if I may know, you're having a five?
Shortly due, I'm not directly responsible for that. I believe we're, I believe we have a police detail as well, so. Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, thanks for your time.
Mr. Borges. How you doing?
I'm here.
I know, why don't you come on up?
Thank you.
Have a seat.
Bulletproof vest on the way, but I.
Nice to see you.
So, recycling's getting out of control in the last week.
In the past three or four weeks, it's gotten a little ugly.
Yep.
Peter, this is just your.
Probably the same one I got.
Probably.
Do you want it for me to look at now or are you good to?
Get on mine, I got six ounces.
I mean, I know you submitted it, but do you want, no?
I, I know this. I've been on the phone with many people in the past week. I'm trying my best to go in for the help, but.
Do we know where this is going?
No way, good.
No way, good. I mean, everybody thinks it's gonna relax come springtime, but then other people say it's never gonna relax until training is trained up, tighter and longer. So.
All right, so, we're going.
Right now, I'm emptying down there, we put in a trailer. And of course, when everybody responded recycling fifteen years ago, there was a, a demand. Well, now, there's way too much for time.
Yeah.
And not enough demand, not in our country. And this isn't just a problem in Massachusetts, it's everywhere. I called friends of mine that are in Spentaport, New York, trash company. And I've worked truck phone for years and there's just no sign of last shipment coming out. I said to him, hey, I got some recycling to get rid of. He said, I'm gonna hang your phone up. They got the same problem, they got the same problem. I spoke with someone at the DEP, they're not willing to relax any of the waste bands as of yet, they're trying to work. I called a guy, the two biggest plants in Mass was Childstown and Auburn, the same company owns both of them out of a month. So, I called a guy I know that I've always known for years. He's not the operation manager, he's the commodities manager or whatever, material manager. So, he said, if you were a new customer calling me, I don't even want this stuff, but because it's been coming here. He says, this is what it is, he says, and he, I called him this afternoon and he called me back three hours later, 'cause he was at a meeting at the DEP in Woodstock and had his phone off. And he said, I'm going to Lakewood next week, so that, try to get the DEP to help, let communities know, you know, the power, you know, what's the problem there? He said, is this the problem?
It's one of the reasons I had asked you to come in. We talked at the hazardous waste day, but I wanted people to realize what we're facing.
It's everywhere, the commodities just dropped. Horrible, and I've had uncompliments that I've taken care of the trash for years that have people picking up certain recycled stuff from them. One of my customers called me Monday and they said, our guy who took our recycling stuff called us two weeks ago and says, can't take anymore. Just don't want it, can't get rid of it. So, he said, come down and see what you can do for us, we're gonna stop moving this stuff. They just don't even want it. So, right now, where I'm emptying out, they're actually trucking the stuff to Auburn in hundred-yard trailers. You need a hundred dollars an hour for a tractor trailer, they get fifteen ton in it, you know, so twenty-five, thirty dollars a ton is trucking because of the travel time.
Yeah, it's, I, I know we're going from forty to one seventeen, just to let people know where we're headed with this.
I actually called this guy in Childstown, because Dayton was the first community, I was the first to go with the single stream and where it went. And I said, so hey, how about helping out the first community here and cut it a little bit, even ten bucks or something, you know? He says, well, he says, you know, we're working on it just as hard as everybody else. He said, because, you know, we don't want it to be, he says, we wanna be able to process it and, and make a buck also, he says, but we can't process it and pile it in the building, 'cause we can't sell it. So, it, it's, it's real ugly.
I would suggest to the people that are watching, you've been with us for forty years and I think, far as I'm concerned, I, I feel like you probably gave it your best shot, but.
I, I'm still working on it, yeah, I'm still working.
We have, we know it's the increase, but is there other, other companies that could help to, help us out a little bit?
Everybody that I've talked to, they, they don't even want it, they don't even want it.
I just got the same letter last Tuesday at work and it was the same thing and I, we panicked, 'cause we don't have the money and.
I know, 'cause that happened to us.
We called.
Years ago.
I immediately called surrounding towns within our group and everybody was getting sent through the same letter from, no matter who their provider was or.
Of the increase.
Yeah, we use New Bedford Waste also, but I know other people using CMAS and I forget the other company.
There's a, there's a week here and there's, there's a MRF going in pretty soon, I don't know if it's pretty soon.
All their rates.
It's free town, I don't know if that's actually. That's never gonna happen, because they're, they're not gonna spend millions and make pennies.
It's true.
It's just, it'll probably never happen.
Their, their rates are actually even higher than, than this cases, so. It's everywhere and it's a problem and.
I'm just looking to offset, if possible, in the future, the, because obviously, you're not budgeted for this.
It's unfortunate, 'cause it, it came out of nowhere and it hit, I think, faster than we all thought.
I, I've talked to people I know in Connecticut, New Hampshire, same problem, same problem. Well, and these guys I know in, in Spentaport, I know, I've given trucks back, one of them's like, just pulling twenty miles. And he said, I'm gonna hang your phone up, 'cause I know what I'm talking about. It's ugly.
Sorry to drag you out, but I wanted to get you, I wanted you to discuss it with us.
This, this guy I know in, in Childstown, he's going to Lakewood next week and I said, if you've got time, call me, anything to come and see me. So, I said, you know, anything you can try to shape on it would be help. But, I mean, I, I called, and, and of course, like I said, fifteen years ago, there was not enough supply, you know?
And they wouldn't charge anything, zero dollars, zero cents.
They, they wanted.
They took it and they.
They wanted this stuff.
They're still using it.
Right.
It's just, I guess.
Now, it's just way too much. This place is where I dump the waste, they let me dump there to help me out. Just what they're doing themselves, they pick up seven, eighty tons of jack, like that.
Yeah, I think.
And that's just one, one place.
Probably we went to single stream recycling, it made it so much easier to recycle. People didn't put it in the trash anymore and now we have excess recycling.
It's true, yeah, we took it out of the waste stream.
Right, the place in Childstown in Auburn, Childstown's the biggest one, Auburn's the next. And fifteen years ago, they had capacity, now, now they don't, but no new places have been built. Small ones, you know, small ones.
We've been at like, I don't, actually have fourteen hundred tons for a few years because of the single stream recycling.
Right, the trash, well, there's a lot of houses going in now.
Well, there's more houses now, yeah, but.
The recycling's going on.
Sometimes I wonder if you're better off in the trash, shouldn't say that, but, you know.
Yeah, that, that doesn't, that won't go away in the landfills, you could find it a million years from now.
Well, you know, DMS could shred it and burn it, but the DEP's not gonna allow that.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's not an option, that's the thing, they're not giving us.
No option. They.
That's it.
I don't know what to say, but they, no option, just figure it out.
Isn't that how it usually is, figure it out?
I'm gonna keep beating the bushes and, and Massachusetts has, there's not enough landfills. CMAS is in Massachusetts, 'cause they haven't built them. Southbridge is the biggest landfill in Massachusetts and it's closing in a year. And, okay, now what?
Done, I think it's gonna close to their capacity again. I know they've been applying for extensions for years.
I remember driving a truck to the State House in Boston years ago, we surrounded the State House with our trash trucks to make them finally pay attention, but, you know, that was twenty-five years ago, but no new facilities have come online.
Do you, do you know if we have a separate budget line, line item for this?
Recycling?
Yeah.
No, we have a separate one.
So, then I guess we have to appropriate funds.
No choice.
Yeah.
Yeah, they ran short on uh.
Then we have to really figure this out, how, do we know how many tons?
You have to go back.
I don't know.
You don't have the records anyway.
Yeah, this way, you you wanna get a good, you wanna get a good figure.
I'm over five hundred tons.
You don't wanna go back again to them and say, we need more money, they need more money.
Well, the 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 problem in hand too is this could change next month, could be high, could be lower.
Yeah.
It it it's a monthly thing.
Okay, waste is okay presently, right?
What's our tipping fee on that one? On the on the solid waste?
Solid waste, trash, about fifteen hundred ton.
Oh, but for the tipping fee at the C M A S?
How much per ton?
I don't know, they they loaded back now, it it's gotta be right around seventy bucks a ton, I think.
Yeah, it's per ton, yeah, somewhere around seventy, could be a little under. Um, but.
I know the contract that came around actually, they priced down, I know.
I think uh.
Yeah, we go by the s- the Boston C P I and all that, uh, could be three percent, four percent a year, whatever it is, but.
Yeah, the other problem, Mr. Chairman, is that we're growing, as you know, exponentially. Just in the last several months, we had a hundred and fifty new people to the town, we're over eight thousand now. And we have three subdivisions that are gonna close out in the next year. So that'll be another forty, forty-five houses.
I know that. Yeah.
So there'll be another hundred and twenty people. So, it's hard to put a tangible number on that, I I agree with that.
And the thing is, we encourage, obviously, everybody encourages recycling, but now, you're getting stuck with the bill.
Yeah, that's that's the problem that like the D E P has, you know, everybody, Dave, you're, we're gonna recycle, and everybody's been doing it, and now.
And that's too much. Keep the good fight going.
Well. Yeah, it's actually.
If you can do anything for us, that'd be great.
Right, I mean, I will keep going wherever I can try to figure out. Certainly, I'll do it. Unless I could just, I'll show up over here in a truck.
Yeah, we'll see how much uh. Well, we'll get the tonnage from you, so we can figure a recording later.
Well, like I said, it might go up.
I know.
Might might go down.
I know, but eventually we have.
We're gonna, we'll keep using what we got in the budget until it's time to replenish it, and you know, it may be the the next meeting.
I can I can get the exact number that we did in the last fifteen years.
I know that last year we also fell short on, I wasn't on at the time, but uh, ended up being thirty, thirty, forty thousand short on one, I don't wanna forget what it was, but.
Um, you know, that had to be the time that all of a sudden they said they're gonna start trying.
Yeah, probably. Because this is fairly new.
Yeah.
The uh, the recent.
They they used to want the stuff, you know, but.
Alright. We appreciate it.
It is, it is, it is.
Yeah, thanks.
Like I said, I'm, I'm, if that guy is gonna be around next week, I I told him, call me and come by. And he said he would because I've been dealing with him for fifteen years.
Yeah.
I know that. A lot of people also, nobody's got any good news.
Is there ever any good news?
Uh, once in a while, you know. At the fall, I'll tell you, that would be good news.
Yeah, alright, Peter, thanks for coming.
I gotta go change a flat on a truck if you guys are done with me.
We are, yeah, thanks for coming, I just.
Yeah.
I just wanted to make a public aware of what's going on and.
Yeah.
You know.
So. It it's supply and demand.
It's it.
The supply is there now and the demand disappears. So. Okay, carry on.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Shondick, you wanna come up here, please? To the front? We won't have to yell at you.
Are we doing? Alright.
Hey, how are you? I can have you sit right there. We have your letter dated the nineteenth, requesting a hearing uh with the Board of Health regarding the property at thirty twenty-seven Elm Street. As, as you know, we had the Title V test done.
Yeah.
Approximately two years ago. And uh, since that time, we don't have any evidence on file or record that anything.
I was, I was.
Had been completed, so.
I was on the impression that, just because it failed failed Title V, it didn't have to get replaced as long as it wasn't a health hazard?
Well, but if if it's a failed Title V, it is a health hazard, right?
I didn't know that.
System failure is considered to be a threat to public health.
Cause replacement now would be like the hardship. Cause we're both on disability, she's legally blind. And I'm on disability. And uh, I had a bad reaction to a drug that they gave me for my medicine. So I sort of, ended up using a lot of the savings, most of the savings. And I ran up some debt. So in the letter, it says, if I agreed to have it pumped every couple of months, I'd get a five-year extension. And we had it, it's funny, because we had one, I wanted to pump it before I came.
Where where did you see that in the letter? The way it says five-year extension?
Five-year extension. The continues to, you wanna do the book?
You had it pumped on November eighth?
Yeah, today.
Okay.
I can make a copy of that.
Yeah, why don't you do that, please?
Yeah, we can, we can set out the five years if we choose, but that's.
Yeah.
It's hard.
We're both on disabilities.
Well, pumping's gonna be pretty costly, and it's not every couple of months, it's every couple of weeks.
The letter says every, it says bimonthly.
That means.
Every two months. Not every two weeks, every two months, bi-weekly would be every two weeks. And actually, when he came out today, he told us that it was barely even half full. And that it didn't need to be pumped at all.
And how much use is?
There's only two of them.
And a child.
My granddaughter lives there during the week, she doesn't live there all all the time.
Is there any funding in the betterment program?
That's what I was just gonna ask.
We're behind on the taxes too, so. I had, the the reaction I had was compulsive gambling. So, we're in debt right, uh, I'm in debt right now. So hopefully, they put me on new medication and I'm getting cleared up.
What did you make there?
I I made a copy of that, that's his, but I I gave it to Roz and Phil, so she can.
Oh, yeah, with the pumping records, alright.
Yeah. Alright, so that, it's.
You don't know how many gallons you took out of there today?
He said it was about half full.
It was half full, it was less than.
Yeah, cesspool, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
He said it was less than a thousand. For him, it wasn't even worth coming down, but, because I requested it, they came in.
Jim, can you refresh my memory, this is just that back trailer area?
Correct.
Okay.
Pumped a thousand gallons from a cesspool.
That's the minimum that they put down.
That's the minimum they charge.
They charge, it's not what they actually pump.
Pumped it up.
Can you see it again?
Yeah.
It says, it says a thousand gallons.
Uh, one bedroom, you should be pumping a thousand gallons every two weeks.
So did they pump the cesspool or the tank, isn't there a tank there too?
A cesspool, there's no tank.
No, it's just a cesspool.
Okay, I thought there was a, something right behind the house.
So what what are you proposing, what was your thought?
I don't, I don't think you should have put a thousand on that.
I was hoping, I mean, two months, and have it pumped, till we get back on our feet. It should be under, hopefully be under five years when you get caught on the taxes, maybe take one of those loans from this town.
And you'd, and you'd still occupy that trailer?
I'm the one who occupies it at the moment, he doesn't live near me, we're divorced. I would feel with my new husband and, like I said, my granddad, I have to like, yeah.
See, see, that's the thing, it's it's, that's a, that's a dilemma, because you're still occupying it, you're still creating a condition. There's a, there's a way to, there's something through the town that we can actually help you with.
Yeah.
But it looks like you you're not able to take advantage of that.
Not at this time.
But it's still there, so that's, that's where we are, because it's.
Well, how about we do it for the town, ask for money, or?
Through the, we have a betterment program.
It's a loan program, basically, it splits it up over the course of X amount of years, gets added to your tax bill.
How do you go about that?
We have applications.
I think it's a twenty-year program, so it actually.
At least twenty years, I think.
It actually creates.
Oh, so it'll be that much?
Well, no, it's a very small amount.
I think it even go up to thirty, no? Roz, what's the maximum years?
Twenty, I think it's twenty.
Twenty?
It's three.
The maximum's twenty years, they break it down into five, ten, fifteen, or twenty, and you get to.
And it's low interest. I think it's only four or five percent.
Yeah.
So we could apply, I don't know, I thought it was one of these things, we had to pay back right away.
No, no, it is, and it gets added to your tax bill.
No, it it gets spoken.
So, can we apply to that?
You could, you can.
I I don't.
This way, this can help you, and then you you would still be, I think, still be required required to pump as needed.
Oh, yeah, you gotta do that to a cesspool, uh, I don't.
Yeah, I'm not saying, so you're not creating a condition.
You'd still, you'd still have to pump regularly until it's repaired, it's a failure.
How does that program work?
Uh, the only concern I have, I can interject, is you said you're in arrears on your taxes.
Yeah.
And I don't wanna, I don't wanna air you laundry on T V, but that may impede your application process.
That's why I asked, if we can get a pump every couple of months, till the taxes are caught up, and then we do a betterment program.
Yeah. But there's, there's also, don't they get like a, I saw something, you get like a tax credit if you put in a septic system?
That's on your income taxes.
Yeah. If you put in a new, uh, I I don't have the paperwork in front of me, but I I had seen something where, uh, if you put in a new septic system.
My disability, I don't pay taxes.
Yeah, it's an earned income credit.
Yeah, okay.
Don't you think there's any other agencies out there that could help you financially, but um, I don't really know of any off the top of my head.
I mean, I could be wrong about the application for the betterment, but I, you know.
I mean, we can try it, put it in, see what happens.
We have an application?
We'll get you.
At least we'd be moving forward.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, we'll have to check in with that, because. Because essentially, essentially, I believe they they put a lien.
They do.
There's another problem with the betterment program, you have to front the money for the engineering.
What does that cost?
No, you.
No, you can put it in.
No, you can put it in.
They they roll the engineering.
You can put it all in.
As long as they get three bids on the engineer, they can include it.
Oh, that's great.
Yeah.
So everything can get rolled into that payment?
In fact, with the town, they can go to if they want.
And then uh. Roz has been really good with these uh applications, and then you'll you'll actually know what you're gonna pay per quarter.
It's not broken down per, it's two payments a year, and I'm not sure if it's the first and third payment or second and fourth, but I just realized that myself, it's two, so it's two pretty good-sized payments
Okay. Okay, thank you.
in six-month intervals spent, it's highly coming up.
Well, if that's the case, you have to plan accordingly, of course.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
But you can easily spend that money on pumping.
Yeah.
Well, a septic system, you're talking maybe a hundred dollars a month, a hundred and fifty dollars a month, but we spread it over twenty years, because septic system's gonna be twenty thousand dollars, that's only a thousand dollars a year.
Right.
Roughly.
Now that, now that's a one-bedroom over there?
Or you can't do one bedroom.
I know, I'm saying that trailer's a one-bedroom?
No, it's a two, it's a two bedroom.
It's a two, two-bedroom minimum, how are the soils over there?
Okay, two-bedroom.
Yeah, it's a two bedroom.
Mm-hmm.
I don't recall, you know, I I think it'll be.
You'd have to get a system for accommodate a two-bedroom.
We'll have a lot of problems.
I don't have any idea what that would cost, but.
I talked to the guy when he did Title V, he said it's about eighteen thousand for the trailer.
Hate, I don't wanna go re- bring out a lot here, but is the,
Yeah, it's a, it's a.
Is it gonna benef- be beneficial for you to maintain that trailer? And put a septic system over a twenty-year period and pay for it? Is that trailer? You know, i- i- in a condition where it will. Yeah, I'm just throwing this out there, you know, because if you're gonna spend eighteen, twenty thousand on a septic system.
Well, I don't plan on dying within twenty years.
Well, no, but the trailer is gonna require, uh, you know, maintenance and whatnot, uh. So, I don't know, you own the trailer, right?
We both do.
Yeah, I do.
We both own it.
Well.
I just recently, I've, I just recently moved back in September.
So that's your permanent residence?
This is my permanent residence.
Okay.
Now.
That's the thing, though, you're occupying. That dwelling has a failed septic system.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
It's definitely a bi-weekly.
We can give you an application?
It's gonna go some help.
Well, the thing is, I I don't, I can't speak for the whole, for the entire harbor, I would still wanna see more pumping records until we see something in place. When you're. And I don't think there's.
And once a month?
Yeah, I don't think there's any guarantee, hopefully this, hopefully this, you can pull through this betterment program.
I would, I would.
With no hiccups.
Someone would pay for the pumping, I would agree to do it once a month if I had to, but if they come out again and tell me that it was unnecessary for them to come out, then what do I do? Cause the guy basically told me today, it was unnecessary for them to come there, the cesspool wasn't full.
Who was you there prior to today?
Years and years ago?
No, when I did the Title V.
There, alright, so about two years ago.
I could be there when they pump it.
Wait, what, when was the Title V?
I'm curious about that, recent digging.
Two years ago.
In the backyard.
They also put a trench in, right? Did you?
Well, we're gonna run a.
The trenches were garden.
Garden holes, uh, the kids wanted garden, fell back, they just have a garden down there. Yeah, and so long.
Now, you didn't, you didn't put another trench in leading from the uh.
No, from the trailer.
Cesspool?
No, from the trailer.
No.
Alright.
Connect the water.
Can I see that pumping record? Did he say, pump, how many, how many gallons did he pump?
They automatically put a thousand gallons.
Well, if there's a thousand, not that's.
Could you go out?
What the?
Oh, that's what he's, I don't think it was just right, cause.
Like maybe day prior, like set a bid once a month?
You get charged by the gallon.
Looks like it means pumping.
No, the minimum is a thousand gallons to a hundred and seventy-five.
I mean, they charge a thousand.
Yeah, as long as I'm not looking for cover, and covers.
You don't get charged by the gallon unless it's over a thousand.
Right, yeah, no, no, any thing.
I call a few places and see if that's how.
I did, they all said the same thing.
Really?
A thousand's what they always, is usually the minimum they call. I called Source, I called Chrome, they all said the same thing.
So what if, what if um, once a month, our inspector makes an appointment to go out, looks, he won't pop the cover, someone else, they will have to pull the cover.
Yep, I think they'll come out. Yep, that's right.
He can look at it, and he can make the determination if it needs to be pumped that month, or if you can wait a couple more weeks or until the following month, does that sound reasonable to you?
Okay, no, that's unreasonable.
We're just trying to protect the environment and public health, and I know, I understand it's an expense, and if it's not necessary to pump.
No, that's fine. That month, that.
That's fine, but that way.
Nope, that's fine.
You know, we can, we can cover ourselves, so.
Yeah.
The head would say.
In the meantime, you can apply for the betterment.
Yeah, we'll, we'll get you that information.
Right.
Okay.
They still need to move forward with some direction of correctional.
Yeah, that's why we're gonna, we're gonna give them the the betterment application, and then you're gonna have to contact, with that, you're gonna have to contact an engineer, uh, do a perk test.
Right.
Have a list though?
Do you have a list here, that you?
Yeah, we shouldn't be in, getting into that.
Like, like three months revisit, see where that at?
I wouldn't recommend one over the other, I'd most likely get a list.
No, no, uh, I have.
A list of several, I suppose.
I've seen where people have a butthole list, and then it says, uh, like a disclaimer saying, there's more out there, but just, just a list of people in town.
What do you, what do you find, just civil engineers, or?
Yeah.
Okay.
But they're out there.
One of the requirements of the betterment program is for you to submit three prices for each.
Okay.
Yeah.
So three prices for engineering, tell it.
They actually have two or three in town that would do it also.
Three prices for de-install, so there will be some bidding that you'll have to do.
So I gotta get prices for the engineer, and and prices to put it in?
Once the fans are drawn, yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think if you looked at uh, septic design or in repair or something like that, there's two or three people in town, maybe even more, that do it.
Yeah, there's all kinds of stuff out there to do it.
Right.
You can ask other, other individuals that you know, word of mouth. And then, uh, Tom, do you have her number?
No, I was gonna make sure we had contact information.
Yeah.
We, do we have it already, or?
I just have a mailing address, I don't.
I'll have it write at the phone.
Yeah.
We got my phone, I will.
So can I, can I make a proposal?
You sure can.
Alright. I, actually, I can make a motion, that um,[1752.14] the homeowners continue pumping, and once a month, prior to pumping, they call the office and schedule an appointment to have our inspector go out and look and determine whether it needs to be pumped at that time or not.
Yeah.
Um, in the meantime, the homeowners start the process of the betterment home, or any other sorts of funding they choose, and get the ball rolling.
Mm-hmm.
And we have them back here, um, three months to see where their status, uh, yeah, probably two months.
Three months, yeah.
Should be adequate time to see what, what the status is of, of their process.
Mm-hmm. I, I second that motion.
Two months.
Two months.
Yeah.
Yeah. So it'll get you, um
Put that already, so.
The second, second, the second, how about we say that the second, uh, week in January, second month, so it'll be our first in New York.
Okay.
Make the amendment.
Second.
I second, okay.
Second.
So where do you get the applications for that, Tom?
We'll give you one.
Yeah, all the information too.
Okay. Alright.
They're gonna get you all squared away with that information, and then you take your permits, uh.
Okay. Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, motion made, seconded, any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye. opposed, motion carries, and, um, just take a minute, Roz, if you wanna get on the paperwork? Please.
What's that?
Yeah, we're gonna get you the application.
Would the board consider waiving the per fee? I don't think we've done it before.
Which fee?
Per testing.
Oh. No, that's a. Okay.
We haven't done it before, so.
Yeah.
I'll take all heels for good.
But they're, they are allowed to put that fee into the betterment too, they can put the town.
Roz.
Correct.
Roz will.
Oh, Roz will.
Yep.
This is the, uh, hell will probably be doing it, but you you do your correspondence with our office manager.
Yeah, I got. She gave me both of their contact numbers, so I can contact them both, so.
I get both numbers.
Okay.
What's that?
Yeah, she's gonna give you.
You feel any better after talking to us, uh, I hope so.
A little bit.
Yeah.
Yeah, we don't, we don't wanna hurt you, we're just trying to help you, you know, it's, uh.
Which one?
You have a vote.
Can you just count it?
Yep.
All right.
Probably a minute for her.
Uh, like, I can take notes if you wanna keep going.
Are you gonna take minutes?
Yeah, if you wanna keep going.
Okay.
We got till seven thirty, you know?
Yeah, we have to recess at seven thirty, yeah.
We had a food permit fee waiver request for the Dayton Holiday Committee, I would imagine, as for the tree lighting, evening. I don't know what date that is, I think it's the Saturday after Thanksgiving, uh, could be the twenty seventh.
Twenty fifth.
Yeah.
Twenty fifth?
Oh, I think we have a letter here.
Alright.
You wish to, uh, re.
I will. Uh, so Dayton Holiday Committee, regarding request to waive food permit fee for lights on celebration. Uh, Dayton Holiday Committee requests a waiver of the food permit fee in the name of both the Holiday Committee and the Dayton Lions Club for the lights on celebration to be held on November twenty fifth, two thousand seventeen, very truly yours, Dayton Holiday Committee. What's your pleasure?
Make a motion to waive the food permit fee.
Second the motion?
Okay, motion is made and seconded to waive the food permit fee for the Dayton Holiday Committee, any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, okay. Uh, next one is to review, discuss an act on building code Title Five requirements. Um, this is about the single family home with the.
All I would like to do, um, before this board convened, I was handling a lot of the Title Five requirements when they pertain to building code.
Okay.
And I was requiring anybody who proposed an addition, or increased living area of a home, to get a Title Five inspection done at minimum.
Mm-hmm.
Since this board has convened, uh, we've taken a step further to see if the, if they were adding bedrooms, see if the system will actually accommodate the additional flow. What I wanna do is be able to speak in one voice, three ten CMR does specifically say that an assessment of the septic system should be done, but an increase in living space is proposed, and or an increase in footprint size, so when a permit comes into my office for any of those things, I wanna send them to the Board of Health for an approval, but I want this board to, and I, to work in conjunction to make sure we're telling the townspeople the same thing.
Merry Christmas.
I would further say that whatever the board decides to do, I will adhere to, you, you know, if you choose not to require a Title Five, that's fine, if you choose to, so be it. In the interest of public health, I can tell you that prior to this board convening, there have been three Title Fives that have failed when the Title Five inspection was requested for an addition or additional living space. So, you know, it seems to me like, you know, justice was done, because we shouldn't be letting someone ex- excrete, ex- expand the living space of a home with a failed septic system. So I would just encourage the board to stay with that line, follow the CMR, and, and require an assessment of the septic to at least see that it's working, and if they're requiring bedroom, if they're adding bedrooms, that we discuss whether the septic can receive the additional flows.
I totally agree, it's generally standard.
Right.
For both.
Okay.
The only concerns I had is, obviously, if you, I see a lot of this, somebody comes in and says, I have a two bedroom, can I put in a bedroom, can I put another bedroom in? And I look and I say, well, you actually designed for three thirty, I don't make them do a Title Five, they're designed for it already.
And then.
And then some people say, I wanna put in a garage. There is no bedroom, there is no.
A garage is not a living space.
Other than I was just saying, and then sometimes they'll say, I wanna put in a kitchen, or or remodel certain rooms, I understand what you're talking about, the others, the other rooms, so there's some variables.
Yeah. Habitable, habitable space does have, I would never ask for a Board of Health approval for a garage.
Yeah.
You won't see those, if you did, you'd see, you know, ten times as many permits as you're seeing, but I think when it comes to living space or additional bedrooms, I think it's prudent for this board to be involved.
I mean, if they're putting on a garage, you wanna make sure you maintain your distance, even if it's just a garage, do you maintain, or deck, even for that matter, you don't wanna put in the deck post on top of a septic tank.
Yeah, you have to. Obviously, yeah.
But if it's not on the plan, he doesn't know that, so if you cry the Title Five.
Okay, well, there, there, therein lies a second, I'm glad you brought that up, because in the interest of making things smooth for the taxpayer, if they can show me a septic plan as built, and I see clearly that the garage isn't going but the septic is, I'm not gonna make them come to the Board of Health, if there's an absence of any plan, does your board wanna be involved?
Well, I generally, I see like a sign off sheet, where it's so, it's kinda redundant, but it's the same idea, I looked at one today, the individual's putting on a, a deck, we just wanna make sure, are you gonna be on top of any of these components, and they show the distance, and there's a simple form where I just signed mine, uh, and sometimes I write, uh, no increase in flow. Something that I want specifically to have on your building permit, uh, so there's no miscommunication.
Right. Right. I already have a sign off sheet that I use, so, you know, if, if you're telling me that you wanna see them, and I, I, I just, I, again, I wanna speak in one voice, I try to do that with other departments. So I, I want us all to be working together, and ultimately, I want the townspeople to be able to do what they want with their home, but by the same token, if we have a failed septic, then we can't be granted permits to put anything, you know, if we have a failed septic system.
Yeah, that would, I, I mean, I, I would say, anything, even like a deck, if you're, if, if they provide, you know, their as-built plan, and it's nowhere near the septic or anything like that, then, you know, I, I would say that's fine. If it's really close, if you wanna send it down here, Todd, you know, can look at it, Roz, and they can say, okay, you know, it meets the setbacks, it's fine.
Right.
Any, um, addition to living space exterior, you know, going out, definitely should have a Title Five, unless it's within, you know, if they just have one done within the last two years, or just had a new system put in last week, that obviously would still constitute a.
Yeah, well.
If they, if they pump within that other one, that second year.
Um.
Right.
And then, if inside, they were putting a wall and making two bedrooms out of wall, and they're finishing a basement, and making, putting a bedroom, you know, or in the walls, and do like that, they should get a Title Five. Again, just to make sure that it's, the system's functioning, even if it, say, they have a two bedrooms on a three bedroom design, wanna make sure that that three bedroom design is functioning properly, and that's.
Yeah. Right.
I think we're talking specifically about a finished ba- finished basement, with no, with, it's additional.
Well, 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 there's a permit, there's a permit here now, not specifically as far as finished basement, I agree with you, but I wanna get a, I wanna get a, a, a process and a procedure in place, so that going forward,
Right.
I, I don't mind doing it, but I shouldn't be doing it, you have a health agent, you have a board, so, yeah.
Well, you said if you wanna, if you have, already have a sign off sheet, and you wanna send them down, I mean, if it's clear cut, and you know, they wanna put a, a garage up, you know, and the, the garage is here, and the septic's over here, I mean, Roz can sign off, if Todd's not, not available, I mean, it's.
Yeah. Okay, alright.
I, I guess the only one I would disagree with is, is if it, if it says it's designed for a certain amount, and they only have, they just say they have two, and it's designed for three, I don't see the need to.
But I don't, I'm not gonna be the one that makes that call.
But I'm just saying, I don't, I don't see, I don't see the need to.
Side of my opinion, that you're a board.
Yeah. Did you, did you read that?
But it's already designed for.
No, but it said it shall be inspected prior to any expansion of use of the facility.
We just wanna make sure the system's still functioning to accommodate that.
Right.
But then, if you read, yeah, if you read further down, it says sometimes all you need is an assessment, and that's a simple as-built.
Oh, okay, assessment was a Title Five.
No, assessment.
No, no, I checked with DEP, assessment is an as-built.
Well, that's why the top of, the top of the Title Five report says assessment right on it.
Yeah, I, I call, I, I, well, cause I dealt with this before.
Is this.
I'm not, I'm not denying that, but.
Yeah. They said like this, sometimes all you need is, uh, an as-built showing, showing you where all the components are, that's the only one I disagree with, is if it's, if it's already, it's already designed for it.
What if it's accessible?
When we pass our regulations, and that, that will be automatic.
Then any increases in footprint?
Yeah.
And logistically, just so everybody at home knows, we're not trying to add more red tape to it, when the health department and my department are all on the same roof, and the files are combined, which we are going to do, this is gonna be a fairly flawless procedure, it's not gonna be, you know.
This is pretty standard, no matter what town you go to, we're just trying to bring things up to where they.
It is, it is, we, we, we've, we've been lax just for a long time, so, a- and one of the reasons I'm, I'm bringing this to you now is, um, we finally have a, a board that's making some changes, making some new policies, bringing us into the twenty-first century, um, so I think this, this goes hand in hand, and I really shouldn't be making those decisions, that should be your board to make those decisions.
No, well, I'm glad, I'm glad you're bringing this up, and I think at one point, when we go over these regulations, we should have a clear cut definition of when a Title Five is needed.
Your board can make that determination.
Yeah, so there's no, it'll be so easy when Todd picks up the phone or anybody, says this is what we're going with.
Yeah. Yeah. Yep.
It's pretty much what everybody's still.
Yep, okay, good, so I, I will send anything down that, in my opinion, triggers that, um, and.
Okay, well, it's, it's good to, I mean, if you send something down and they add a Title Five, that failed, I mean, just looking at
Right.
Your stuff, that's, you won't know that, they're not gonna tell you that.
I don't, I won't know that.
Well, it will be when all the files are combined, you can, so.
Right, but right now, you send it down here, they'll pull the file, and oh wait, you know, they get a failed Title Five.
Yeah.
Yeah. And quite frankly, um, you know, if we have this policy at both departments, things, things won't get slipped by, because my office manager will know, okay, that needs Roz's approval before we can move forward with it, so similar to what we do with other permits.
Well, it's no different than the wiring permit on a well, or, or a pump, or a pump chamber, to make sure they did all the permits that are just.
Right. Right.
Absolutely. And, and you have a sign off anyways, if somebody goes for a, uh, building permit, doesn't the tax collector have to sign, and?
Yeah, yeah. Y- yes, they know, they.
Everybody has to sign off, and just add our name to it, and if you're okay with it.
Yeah. Yeah. Oh, your name is, your name is on it, yeah.
Oh, it's on it.
Okay, perfect, I never got to see the form, that's why.
Okay. So, yeah, I just wanna, I just wanna speak in one voice, when we, we talk to the townspeople, the permit, um, applicants, and, and that'll be standard procedure from now on.
Okay.
So, I'm sorry, I was gone a little bit with, um, the Shonex, so.
Todd was taking notes.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Yeah, I pointed to it, sure.
We did, but just.
Yeah, if you, if you feel that, you know, send, send it down here. Okay?
Yep, thank you.
I, um.
You're all set?
Yes, thank you.
Well, then.
Doesn't need to start down here at seven thirty, so.
It's time.
Yeah, it's that one.
Oh, feet, move along, we will discuss act extension of time for disposal works permit applications.
Uh, yeah, this came up because, uh, permits, disposal work permits are good for three years, and if somebody wants to extend it for up to three years, they have that right, but we don't have a fee in the thing, and at this point, you'd have to review the file, make sure everything's still okay to move it forward, so there is some time involved in it, so we didn't know if there should be a fee for that, I know we're gonna be discussing regs and fees, but just something to throw out there. We haven't had any of these that come in recently, but there's been a couple that have been close, and they're nearing the end and putting them in, but I'm guessing there might be more of them now that the economy's starting to kinda ramp up a little bit, so. Just a thought, just something to put in your brain, we don't have a lot of time to discuss it tonight, but.
I, I, yeah, the, the other town I work in, uh, a revised approved plan is seventy-five dollars, just to submit a revised plan, it's twenty-five dollars. You just wanna make sure, like you said, after the three years, the, the authority didn't do something different, that actually changes that plan, you wanna make sure that, that plan is valid, so.
Put in a well or something, right, yeah, right. So at this time involved.
Yeah, the same engineer that's gonna be doing, doing your work, but, and four times the engineer's passed, passed away, and some shady stuff has happened, so.
Yeah. And normally, uh, sometimes there's variances with those, that were, well, not a new construction, that's all new construction, um. Yeah.
We can do it any.
I've seen it. I've, I've seen it, I would, I would recommend this, is, uh, that individual either come, come before us, or just to say, this is what I plan on doing, I haven't started for this reason, whatever it is, and then we can, um.
Again, it hasn't come up, it was just a thought, as long as we're updating the schedule, so, okay, we can talk about it more when we do the Title Five.
Yeah.
We could add that, no, fees, and when we put our package together.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Yeah.
Um, what do you suggest, what do you recommend, what was it, twenty-five?
I think twenty-five should be for, what's that revised plan?
Seventy-five.
Seventy-five, and Title Five inspection, we made fifty.
It should be at least seventy-five the same way. Yeah.
Alright.
So there's not a lot of them, so.
Revised plan is seventy-five?
Yes, like a re-review.
Re-review.
That should be for the same thing, for the.
Consent it to get it right the first time.
And, uh, seventy-five, I think, for the, uh, the one after three years, for, um, revised for an approved plan.
Yeah, I, I'd definitely go with that, I mean, it's, it is, gotta re- review the plan to make sure that everything is still accurate and acceptable. Get a new power, make sure it's same engineer, and, you know, so, yeah, I, I would say that's.
Okay, so we'll put it in for the discussion of the, the fees and the regulations when we get back to that.
Okay. Okay, move along, third reading of Title Five review fee. Look at that, not, it's not on my head.
So it'll be effective tonight, or?
We're reading this one, alright, let's see, yeah. Uh, just on the third reading of the Title Five review fee, uh, the new Title Five review fee is, uh, it'll be fifty dollars.
That's upon submission, correct? Todd, that's when they submit the Title Five, yeah, to take that. Yes, and then I review it, let them know if there's anything that needs to be corrected.
Right.
Okay. We're gonna do the, uh, do we have to, uh, the perk rate?
We're gonna do all the regs that one fell swoop once.
Okay.
Cause we have to advertise it in the paper, and we don't wanna do just one thing, and then do the rest of them later, just do them all at once.
Right, alright.
Okay.
We're.
So we're gonna add this re- new Title Five review fee to our current list of.
So.
Fees.
Fees, the fees aren't regulations, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
And that's effective immediately, or?
Yeah, that was the third reading.
So.
So do you have.
After, right now.
Right, so the Title Five inspection came in today, there's no fee, but the one that comes in tomorrow, the.
Still dealing with ways there, I, um, had a little more involvement with it, I wanted to see the treasurer. Still dealing with waste zero. I, um, had a little more involvement with it. I went to see the treasurer, uh, yesterday. In part of waste zero's, uh, agree, uh, contract, they want to, uh, be able to withdraw money from our bank account for their fees and services. And the town treasurer, uh, disapproves of that practice. So right now, we're waiting on, uh, waste zero to come back with an alternative, uh, method. They can either bill us and we'll send them a check, or they can take it out of the money that's coming back to us. So we'll see what they're willing to offer. I don't know what you do out there.
Um, we have a contract with them, but in light of our hundred and seventeen dollar tipping fee for recycling now per ton, uh, in order to conserve some money.
Yeah, I think you're right.
I think maybe we hold off on.
On a proposal.
Yeah. Is that right to continue with with you and hopefully it'll be right with Tom to continue the way we've been doing it? Just, uh.
Doesn't bother him, so.
It's it's another, it's, what, we come up with like six or seven thousand dollars?
Yeah, wasn't a whole lot, but it, uh, it's money. But, um.
So. Maybe we can just.
I think we oughta table until a future time when.
Ta- table till the spring and, uh, see where we're at with the recycling rates and.
At least, at least spring. Okay.
Also making sure that waste zero, I, and all the bag vendors are, uh, far and few between now, but I know some people have been unhappy with the quality of the bags. So just ensure that the quality doesn't continue to decline and we're stuck in a contract for several years.
Yeah.
I think, um.
I don't know which ones I have problems with, whether it be the one with the ears, the twist ties, or the drawstring.
I think it's the drawstrings.
Yeah, I still say, I had, I just got some of this drawstring.
Yeah.
I think it's the old stuff, obviously, it's circulation.
Waste zero, once with waste zero, drawstring. The doggies are the old ones.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
They are thinner, but again, there's, there's almost no vendors who will do the bags anymore, um, and we ran into that. All the small companies are being bought out by essentially waste zero, so our options are limited, but, um, just in light of, again, the recycling rates that just went.
I think one of the problems was when they, uh, actually the border selectmen at the time, acting as border health, were the ones that, uh,
Through the roof.
had mandated that the bags be, uh, tied and sealed. Were you there at the time?
There was discussion when I was on the board that people were overfilling the bags and there were like two kitchen bags piled on top of what would normally be tied off, and that's.
Yeah, I think.
I think Bor- Bor just was making some comments about, and essentially, when you put the bag in, it has to be completely sealed and tied.
Mm-hmm.
Um.
He has one of the reasons.
You go over, then you gotta use another bag, that's.
Yeah, once you, once you start trying to close them.
Part of page two, bro.
Yeah.
And they're overfilled, then they tear.
Right.
So.
So was that a motion that table us?
Well, we could try to change from drawstrings to.
Table the big. I don't think they give an option to.
No.
No. I think that the bag itself will still be the same, it's just the top is the one, but, I mean, it's, it's not gonna make a difference, it was just really a side comment. But I'd, I'd say we should table the, uh, waste zero proposal on how the bags are distributed until, uh.
I would agree with that.
Maybe April or May, and see where at, one, with the recycling rates, and two, you know, give, give some time to iron out the issues with the quality of bags and quality of bag.
Quality transfer. Second, okay, motion is based in second. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All votes, motion carries. Move on to updating, well, let's do some public input. Let's do inspectors' reports. He looking around.
Um, not that, yeah, I mean, I've had two dog bites in the past couple of days, uh, cou- couple of weeks, but it's been, I hate to say this, pretty quiet.
Oh, you just tricked himself, no.
Deer right now, one deer, my, uh, my problem right now, um, they're getting hit just about every night, or during the day, or wherever, whenever they decide to walk across the street.
Oh, it's all over now.
Um, so people, please be careful, especially at night in town, because they're out, there does, bucks, dogs, it doesn't matter, they're chasing each other and they don't care about the street, so. Um, last time we were here, we went to the meeting at Bristol Aggie afterwards, a lot of same information, but just as an FYI, um, there's a line thirty-three F on your taxes. It's for the animal fund. If you, if everybody donated a dollar, it would help immensely. It, um, goes to spaying and neutering animals, whether you're low income or our feral cats or animals that I take in that we can't spay and neuter for whatever reason. Um, they help, they send out vouchers, so, and they're just all funded through that line. Sometimes they get grants, but I think they said here, I just got an update today. They have done seven, seven thousand four hundred cats and dogs this year already. Right now, we're waiting four to six months, unless you're an emergency. They're, but they've got about four hundred and fifty waiting to be done, but we have to wait for the money to come in, so. If you're an animal lover, that line would be great to help animals in Massachusetts. I've used them in town, so.
As one of those that doesn't change your deduction, I mean, you're, uh, you have your chair in one way or the other, right?
No. Nope. They'll be sending out posters and stuff like that, so I'll put up a couple posters, but, um, a way to help those animals in need.
Okay. Now, on the dog bites, uh, licensed, not licensed?
Not licensed, up to date, though.
Up to date on shots? Okay, we have to work on that licensing, uh, project for the, uh, and just so everyone will know what's coming.
Leash law.
We are looking at leash law for the annual town meeting. So, um, you can expect that. We've had way too many loose dog complaints and bites and so forth, um, you know, and and especially with the bites, I I just, you just mentioned it, uh. If we don't know the dog has been vaccinated and up to date on its shots, then that puts the precedent, it's been bitten at quite a bad position.
Well, yes and no, but you were sitting last week, uh, a couple of weeks ago in that meeting, right now, they've changed the standards. No longer is a dog considered unvaccin-.
Yeah. Forgot what.
They're unvaccinated, but you vaccinate as they come in. If they're unvaccinated, then they're considered a vaccinated dog. So they've sort of changed that a little.
Yeah.
And why? If I had one in its lifetime.
Right, right.
You just have to do it again.
You just have to do it again, which we all vaccinate anyways, so that's not the problem. The problem is the dog that's never been vaccinated.
Right.
That's a problem. And unfortunately, our health profession is the problem, because as soon as they see a dog bite, they have, they wanna give rabies vaccines. And you don't need to do that. We do the ten-day quarantine for a reason. If a dog bit because it was rabid, it would show up in those ten days. And we could give the vaccines if we needed to in those, after those ten days.
Okay. That was all you did?
That's it.
Do, good job. How about you today, this week, this month, nothing?
Got sixty seconds. Nothing to report. Roz, Roz and I are doing well.
No.
Looking good.
What did I do? I didn't do much of anything either. We had a lot of people that cleaned up their property. The letters seem to be work- working well, um. There is a sofa on the corner of Main Street now, though, that we need to, it's been there long enough, uh, so. We're gonna be vacating, uh.
Sorry, guys.
That's okay. We'll see it a little bit.
Want us to adjourn?
Hmm?
Want us to adjourn after we're up there?
Well, I don't know how much time we got, I know we have to figure out our scheduling for the rest of the year for what day we wanna do.
Well, do we wanna work on it? We could do that.
That's right, 'cause Thanksgiving, we'd be scheduled to, for Thanksgiving.
Yeah.
Yeah, 'cause the next meeting would be the twenty-second, which is the Wednesday before Thanksgiving, so.
So we're in November. This is the, uh.
We have, oh, Thursday after Thanksgiving, I mean, Wednesday after Thanksgiving.
Do the twenty-ninth, and then that would push you to the.
Twenty-ninth, yeah.
Then you've got, you'd be back on schedule.
Yeah, that's the only day that.
And then the thirteenth, and then twenty-seventh.
The, the second Wednesday?
Yep.
Yeah.
I have meetings opposite of these meetings, I want to, it's, it's like a.
As long as we're on the same page.
You can't do the twenty-ninth, right?
I guess we do one week on a Thursday, the thirtieth.
Do that.
Can you do that, Tom?
That's fine with me.
Yeah.
Thursday, thirty.
So our next meeting will be on the Thursday.
It's just every Wednesday, if, and every, I have these.
Thirtieth.
What time, six?
Um, can we do six-thirty?
If six-thirty is better for it, that'd be good.
Yeah, it looks, yeah, it looks a little bad.
A little bit better, yeah.
So six-thirty on the thirtieth.
Sounds like, thanks for going out.
It's not like, if you, if you keep one of them, something like that, so.
Yeah.
That'd be a little bit better.
So do we wanna do maybe just one meeting in December then, or do we wanna keep staying?
We should, we should be able to keep December dates.
Or the thirteenth and then twenty-seventh?
Yeah.
And at six-thirty, do we wanna make them then, or six, okay, on?
Six, seven, right. Yeah, Thursday.
Doesn't matter to me.
But Thursday, six-thirty would be better for me.
Six o'clock on Wednesday, the thirteenth. And six o'clock on Wednesday, the twenty-seventh.
Just have to let Kable know about that Thursday.
Yeah, that's true. And, um, since we're talking about meetings, we're gonna be at, um.
The eighteenth, right?
The eighteenth. Okay, we have to post that?
Yes.
Can't you both be there?
Roz, Roz, oh, sorry. I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't see it.
No, no, I'm sorry.
I apologize, um.
We're talking business, though.
The conference that we're both gonna attend, can you post that as, uh, on the eighteenth?
Any HP.
Oh, okay, yep.
Since two of them are gonna be at the same place.
It was a forum, the same.
Oh, so I need to post that, okay.
Yeah, just. Just because of the perception.
Cover yourself.
Yep.
You know, things, so.
I think I see only other meetings, right?
Uh, other than the twenty-ninth, when we have our.
I need. Do I need to post that surf save?
Surf save.
Well.
I'm not gonna go.
I won't be there.
No.
So, no, yeah, it doesn't. And I would, yeah, that's fine, 'cause he's not a board member, so.
Uh-huh.
No.
Okay.
We have fifteen people of the class, so it worked out pretty well, um.
Wow.
Hmm.
I think the household hazardous waste, they went pretty good. I think there was probably well over a hundred cars.
That's great.
Um, you know, uh, we made a decision that day that, somebody said they had a couple propane tanks. I think we ended up with ten tanks and everybody got a free, a free day. Didn't charge for oil, didn't charge for propane tanks. We had plenty of money there. I think the residents were entitled, they, they pay enough taxes, so.
That's good.
Made a decision. Nobody complained about the decision, so.
That's a, that's a pretty good turnout. Did you know?
Are we, uh, are we gonna do anything with the?
Yeah, I'm gonna.
Todd's suggestions tonight.
Well, we only got a few minutes, but, um, the twenty-seventh of December, I.
Yeah.
We don't have a place to come back to after.
Oh, yeah.
We can, no.
Um, twenty-seventh, I'm gonna be out of town.
I think we had a. I think we had to think about a workshop on this.
I possibly am.
It's school vacation week, so you guys can do a meeting on this.
I put, just on the, on general item, I just put something together real quick, and this is just a real quick rough draft. This is more just some wording, and then it actually has his stuff in there. It's like really brief. I just actually was thinking, if we put in, like, uh, in the middle here, it says, case law upholds board's authority to adopt regulations that are more restrictive. And then that's where we put that in. This is our stuff here.
Yeah, I was gonna say, we can't add to the existing.
Yeah.
This is for our own, uh, manual, what's required by the town, and it can be more restrictive.
And this is, again, this is just example.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. And even on this, where I said, it says like this, uh, most sanitary codes, we could just list the ones that we do.
Yeah.
Or is that, and then essentially any, like any of, say, the title five regs?
Yeah.
Any, anything like that that supersedes, you know, these.
Something to, the facts, well, somebody can grab our record and say, this is what they're doing there.
And that's, right. It's in the whole thing, right.
So again, this is just a rough draft, real quick, I just put it together. Uh, we could work off that, or anybody else, our stuff. At least we identify what's, what we're thinking, what we changed.
Mm-hmm. Absolutely.
And the, the last couple of pages, something we already adopted. I just put that in there. We already have this on the books. We'd have to put that in the manual as well.
Okay. Yep.
And I, I included everything that Todd had mentioned that still has to be voted on.
Well, as long as you guys are okay with it. We never really discussed any of it to know if they'd really like it or not, so.
Yeah.
But I'm gonna take Todd's stuff, I can actually make it into like a supplemental reg.
Yeah.
And then we can tweak it at our next meeting, and then we can, uh, if we like it, then we can, that's, that's a really big start.
This is the biggest changes, is the title five stuff, so.
Right.
Once we get my, uh.
Do that, uh.
Me too.
Over the next couple of weeks.
Thanks, Jim.
Okay.
Have it ready to go. Maybe I can catch up with that.
Well, what's happening in the next couple of weeks, too, is the building. I gotta make an announcement, we're gonna be shuffling stuff around, it's gonna get chaotic, but, yes, we can. She started the manual, the old manual already, so.
So.
That was just that one part of it, so.
Yep. We can adjourn here.
I just wanna make an announcement, our transfer station stickers, the new ones are in, uh, they, they finally have some that say two thousand eighteen. The next year, we'll start selling them. Uh, they'll be for sale this weekend at the transfer station, uh, same price. And, um, the attendant will show you where to put them on your windshield or on your windows. So, uh, no more pink and blue and orange and green. So these will be good from now until the end of, uh, two thousand eighteen. Once you put them on there, so. All right, uh, anything else?
Do you wanna read anything, the announcement, so?
Let me see what's on.
I think they, they pretty much covered that at the select.
Yeah, shots, uh.
Really.
Yeah, covered that, uh.
No, I have one. Roz, you want one for the minutes? It's up to you if this, I'm, I'm, I have one, if you have one.
I think, yeah, I got one.
Yep.
Thanks. Yeah, they were right there at the, they'll be reading it for select, so. We pretty, we done, are we entertain a motion to adjourn?
Make the motion.
Second.
Okay, motion is based in second to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
All votes, take carries. Night, everybody. Thanks.